Okay, everybody ready? All right, welcome back, everybody. We are now rejoining our regular programming here of the Mason County Commission briefing for Monday, May sixth, two thousand and twenty four. We're going to move into community development with Kel Rowan. Kel, good morning.
Morning. Okay, the first thing is I just wanted to give an update on we had a, we were invited, the building department was invited by the Economic Development Council and Olympia Master Builders and it was a contractors conference, I guess you could call it. It was a breakfast meeting on April sixteenth that was held at Builders First Source here in Shelton. And it was very well attended. And Todd Cunningham, our building official and Josh Luck, our deputy building official, gave a presentation mostly focusing on the energy credits. But they both did a really good job and I think that the the folks in attendance were pleased with the information that they received and hopefully it just opened up some good communication between our department and the contracting community within Mason County. So just hopefully, I don't know if I see Todd or Josh on the line, but if anybody had any questions or
Commissioner Trask attended that, would you mind giving some praises? I know you want to.
Oh, I absolutely do, man. It was well attended. I want to thank Mike Gil for reaching out to so many of the contractors and organizing the the amazing burritos, breakfast burritos by Monica at Las Palmas. And but our staff, they are they are so well versed in in the things that they do, so I I couldn't couldn't speak higher about them. They they did an amazing job. I I think what what might be a good thing for us to do is do this maybe, you know, at least every six months or something like that, just because things change so often. And this way, all of our builders know that we care and that we're concerned about the process forward. I think that we're, we've made a lot of improvements. You and your team are doing a great job in as far as timelines and and working with with everybody. I mean, it's your entire team, so I want to send out a huge thank you to to them, make sure that they know that we appreciate them. But it would be good to, I think, have more of these so that we are communicating more with our with our people. Public Works was there also. We had our health department as well. So everybody was, our Mason County was well represented. And I really want to thank the EDC also, Karen. She's, she was feeling many hats at the time, but she did a great job and and want to thank Mike also for for the things that they did.
Yeah, thanks. And our, you know, I've been at with the county since two thousand and five. I had a six year gap in between there, but our building department, I think now is 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 really at its best that I've ever seen. So everyone in the that does plans examining and inspectors has at least one certification, if not multiple certifications in their field, and that has not always been the case. And so they do ongoing trainings. We just had an all day, all staff meeting last Tuesday where we were all together in the morning and then in the afternoon, we did breakout sessions. And again, the the building department continued to do their ongoing education. So that benefits the community at large and I think that their presence and their their presentations on Tuesday, the sixteenth really showed the effort that they they're putting into to their work.
Okay, what else you got there for us?
And then next would be Randy Collins, our fire marshal.
Good morning, Randy.
Good morning, Chair Netherland, fellow commissioners, Administrator Neary. The item I have before you today is the Blavestack Fire Investigation Reporting Software Contract. As you probably remember, at your December fourth, two thousand and twenty three meeting, you approved the contract for fire investigation services with the Mason County Fire Chiefs Association. One of the conditions identified in that contract was to assume the responsibility of funding a software program known as Blavestack that's used for preparing fire investigation reports. That was actually currently being used by the chiefs. Because their term of service did not expire until June first of this year, this item was deferred in the contract to be brought back to you shortly before its expiration, which of course is just the first of next month. So to that end, the item before you is to approve the enclosed Blavestack contract for nine thousand five hundred one dollars, and this covers the period of June first, two thousand and twenty four through December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five, which is done, which was done specifically to coincide with the expiration date of the existing fire investigation contract with the chiefs. And one thing that is not noted in the staff report is that thirty five hundred dollars of that cost is to cover the balance of this year and then six thousand of it is to cover for the entire year of two thousand and twenty five. And that concludes my report unless you have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Or you're good to go?
I'm good to go.
As am I. Thank you, Randy.
You're more than welcome.
Kel, you got anything else for us?
That would be it.
Commissioners, you have anything for Kel? Here and none. Thank you, Kel. Appreciate you. Have an awesome day.
You do.
Next up, we have Dave Wyndham, Public Health.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, I got, I've got two things on the agenda for today. First thing is a potential building lease for public health. This is with, in conjunction with Mason Hospital. They've got an unused building up there. We've been talking with them about occupying that building and moving our community health and human services group up to that building and that would give us more room here and for for environmental health. And then hopefully we move some of those file cabinets of files downstairs from upstairs into maybe some safer places for those file cabinets to be. So that is, the the lease is included and the current floor plan is included in your packet. And looking to put it on the action agenda for the next time we have action agenda, which I think is in two weeks.
Questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Shutey?
Dave, so any kind of tenant improvements, is that going to be coordinated with Mark and Kelly or do we have to contract out for those?
Yeah, so, yeah, so there'll be some tenant improvements. We'll need to do IT and then some of the exam rooms will need to be converted to office space, you know, basically by by putting in some carpet and taking out the sinks. We're going to keep two exam rooms complete and a lab as well, so we have flexibility on doing things as we go forward into the future.
Mr. Trask?
No, I think this is, this is exciting. We we need more room. Obviously, and I think that this is definitely a positive step forward and it need that we're going to be up there by the hospital because I mean, that's the source that we're providing or in conjunction with. So I think it's it's a great idea.
And Dave, I understand it, but I'd like you to explain it to the public a little more about the funding on this and where all the money's coming from to do it.
Okay, so the the hospital offered this building to us basically at no fee in exchange for us. So the hospitals are required to do community service. And by us moving up there, they can get credit for the work that we do as community benefit. So it's basically, it's it's an exchange of of our our services for the building. And so our our costs for the building itself is, there's no rent. We will be required to do the the upkeep, the IT, you know, heat, that sort of thing. So and there'll be some expenses. We'll need to get a photocopier, things like that up to that location as well.
And there's no impact to the budget. You have the monies that you need outside of that is already within your budget and you have it available?
Right, so we got it in the budget and I also have a substantial account in investments as well, so.
So I'm supportive. Is that three, three yeses, Commissioners? Hold ahead nod. Yep, yep. Okay. What else you got, Dave?
Okay, the other thing is just informational. We, I've been asked to to put together just a quick update on the opioid funding. So we've got opioid funding in from a number of sources now. We've got one that's still outstanding. We just signed that one last week, so we should be getting that. Some of the funding is one time funding. Really, there's only one account that will continue to fund the county going forward, and I've included all those those numbers in what we've got in in here now. So we're around five hundred seventy four thousand dollars currently. And that's a lot of that is one time funding. We will be getting around ninety thousand dollars a year in years going forward.
The fire department's requests and the idea of perhaps taking some monies to help them, can you explain a little bit of that, please?
Yeah, so they are looking to get some some funding to add the psych ARNP to the South Mason County. So it's going to take some some funds to get that rolling. And we talked about that quite a bit. I met with Abe and with Chief Bobbakin at the Mobile Health Clinic Conference, like the next day after we had discussed this. And what we're talking about is is funding for a couple of years out of the opioid services for that position. That position really needs to speak to opioid work. I'm sure there's plenty of it out there. And then for time going forward, once we've done that, we can go back to the managed care organization. So those are Medicaid payers. And say, we've saved this much money. We have something quantitative that we can take to them and say, we're saving MCO's money. We would like to get paid for this going forward.
And I know they've been working on billions and stuff on top of that, so.
And then they're doing billing out.
Does it, it it looked like it's working pretty well from your standpoint?
I think so. I think I think this expands their capacity and it certainly brings it to the south part of the county as well.
I think it's very well needed. Now, you're not asking for anything from us, right? At this point, this is informational, right?
Right, so I asked them to go ahead and put together a proposal of what they they think they need. And then we can go through that in briefings down the road.
Commissioners, comments, questions?
Dave, just appreciate this. Are you anticipating any additional settlements of the one time variety?
I think this is the last one I've heard of is the Johnson Johnson. So we've got that one in. I've I've heard rumors there's another one out there, but I've not seen it come through the portal yet.
Hey, any further questions for Dave on this one?
No, just a comment. I think it's this is definitely going to help Mason County. And we're also working with the city in this, right?
Right. Yeah, so in this first couple batches of funding that we got, the city money was rolled into county money as well, so.
Okay, anything other than this issue, Commissioners, any questions for Dave before we set him free? No, thank you, Dave. Anything left for us?
No, I think that's it. Have a great day.
Have a great day. Thank you. All right, next up, WSU Extension Heidi, good morning.
Good morning. Hope you all are doing well. I am the coordinator for the noxious weed program. And I just have one item to discuss. So we received our new participating agreement from the US Forest Service. The participating agreement number is twenty four dash PA dash one one zero six zero nine zero zero dash zero four two. This is for the amount of thirty five thousand dollars and the funding would start once signed this year and run through till September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty six. This funding will be used to survey for and treat noxious weeds on forest service lands. And the funding can also be used on properties adjacent to forest service lands and roads leading up to the forest service area. This will have no impact on our current budget. And currently, I am just asking that this gets moved to the action agenda for May twenty first for signature and approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Not for me. Good, good to go forward.
Nope, no questions and good to go.
Same here. You have all three. Heidi, do you have?
Thank you very much.
She's so, she's still so nervous.
Yeah.
No, it's awesome. You're doing great, though.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Do you have anything else for us you'd like to say before? The one for your day?
No, I don't think so. We're just just getting into the field season, trying to hire a seasonal person. And this week, we're doing some perennial pepper weed treatment out on the Hood Canal and then hopefully some nap weed treatments at Lake Isabella. So we're getting into the field season.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, Heidi. Have a great day.
Yeah, you too. Thank you.
Next up, I have Public Works, Loretta Swanson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you, Commissioners? Happy Monday.
Happy Monday. We're doing incredible.
Great. All right. First up, we have a request to place on the action agenda intent to create a road improvement district. And I understand Commissioners that there was some discussion last week about that. And I know that Mike and Lovejoy have some additional information to share this morning.
Hi, Mike. Lovejoy, welcome.
Hi, morning. Yes, I checked with Tim Whitehead about your question last week regarding consolidating RIDs. And he stated that the only way you would be able to do that is if you already had existing road improvement districts. And they were already through the process and they were already being assessed. I also spoke with Lisa Fraser, the treasurer, and she said unfortunately she couldn't make it here today. But she did speak with one lender that was interested. And they did have a couple stipulations, which she's going to check with them for additional information. She is still also waiting for other, a couple other lenders to respond to her. But she said that the one is interested, just has a couple stipulations about whether or not one owner can have twenty percent of the road frontage, but she wasn't sure if that meant for like the whole RID or just the road frontage. But she's still checking on that.
So am I, am I correct in saying that we're getting close, but it's not fully baked yet to move forward? We don't have all the information. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, Lisa said that her end of it shouldn't prevent it from moving just this one step forward of just setting the hearing, but she is working on it.
Okay, Tim, I saw that you put your beautiful face out there. Can you want to comment on?
You don't need to lie, but I appreciate it. No, I did talk to Lovejoy last week and there is a provision for consolidating road improvement districts, but the way the way the statute reads and the way I just think that it would have to work is that if there was one already established that we could court, that we could coordinate and consolidate this one with, I think the the logistics would just be too tough if you're trying to do two at one time. So and I think the statute anticipates that having one or one or more already existing and then just for bond purposes only, you could then consolidate.
That'd probably for refinance then.
Yeah, yeah.
But gotcha. And that's actually, though, that's something we hadn't thought of. We put something out there for so many years in one type alone and then refinance, but I don't know that, you know, that's always taking a risk. Commissioners, does that answer some of the questions that we had the last time we were discussing this?
I think it does for me.
Yeah, for me, I think also I want to thank you. Thank you guys for reaching out and and finding the extra information that we requested.
Yeah.
Great job.
So are you ready to put it on the agenda, Commissioners?
Yeah. Lisa says it's good. Then I'm good.
Yep, so we're on.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners.
What else you got for us?
Ah, so next up, we have some follow up on the request and the hearings examiner decision on the road vacation request within the plat of Lakeland Village. And I believe that Lovejoy had some additional information that she forwarded to Commissioners as well and to share this morning.
Awesome.
Yes, I checked with Tim Whitehead again on this one as far as whether or not there was any liability of just vacating one half. And he said there, everything was fine. That there won't be any additional liability. And I also sent you guys a couple road improvement, excuse me, I mean, road vacations for previous ones that were done back in two thousand and fourteen where they did just a little triangle of a cul-de-sac. That was road vacation number three eighty nine.
Think I remember that one, Mesa Lake area. That's okay.
Shore states.
Okay.
Couple more.
If if he's comfortable with with doing it on a half, I'm comfortable with doing it on the half. I just wanted to hear it from somebody that they don't see that as an extra liability. And if that's the case, maybe eventually we could choose to maybe give it to the the other property owner or something. I don't know. We'll have to look at that in the future.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't I don't see any additional liability. They're all, all these roads or these old roads that were never opened or piecemealed anyhow, so down down the old existing road that's been vacated. So there's there's no issues that I see.
But I'm okay with moving forward. How about the other two Commissioners? Yep, okay. We are. We're moving.
Great, thanks, Commissioners.
Thanks, Tim.
Yep.
Thank you, Lovejoy, for running to ground all the questions.
Yep, thank you, Lovejoy.
Yeah.
All right, and then next up, Commissioners, we are happy to report that the Department of Ecology and our Health Department reviewed the monitoring that's been taken place out at the Eels Hill landfill and have concluded that we can discontinue the the groundwater monitoring. So we still have post closure, other post closure activities. But so we're free to proceed with those now, which include decommissioning wells, decommissioning the the gas apparatus and then providing a certification. So we're we're on our way to to final landfill closure. And just a big thanks to Richard and the team and of course, our Environmental Health and Health Department of Ecology partners in moving through and and our consultant parametrics who provided the monitoring and and the the reporting. So yay, yahoo.
I don't have one of those things. We're gonna have to just roll with that. Thank you. What else you got?
That's all I have, Commissioners. I do understand that Stephanie and Mark and Richard were cranking out all kinds of good rate scenarios and what ifs. And so I'm playing catch up on on that business, but if there's anything that you need or have questions about, we do have the hearing coming up tomorrow. So I am absolutely here and available.
I'm gonna jump.
Questions in preparation for that.
Yeah, I'm gonna jump to Mark for a minute. Mark, are we gonna have any discussions about those numbers or?
I actually thought we were going to discuss them this morning. I thought we were going to discuss them and and hopefully be able to narrow them down to what we could present tomorrow.
Okay, great. And I know Stephanie is here and ready.
I see her. There she is.
I am here. Good morning.
Are you able to share your screen? You want to, could you set us up to have a little discussion on this?
Okay. Let's see. I'm looking for share screen. I apologize.
Okay.
Should be down at the very bottom, Steph, the green button. There you go. All right, so you can see the Russell Wood sewer? Perfect. I have, I have way too much on the screen. There we go. So for the requests of Commissioners, there were a couple additional scenarios that were requested to be calculated. And so we came up with a couple additional scenarios to review. The first one requested was the affordability rate of the one ten fifty four, which would be a decrease on their current Russell Wood Sewer's current rate, which is one twenty, one hundred and twenty six dollars and thirty cents. And so we we walked through this scenario. We walked through several scenarios and just kind of came up with a narrative for each one. So by reducing it, Russell Wood down to the one ten fifty four, which is the affordability rate from the two thousand and twenty one affordability index. Russell Wood would see a reduction of about thirty thousand dollars or fourteen percent in the in the first year. The the proposed rate would would not cover the operating or debt expenditures and the debt reserve of twenty, twenty five percent for the prior year would not be obtained. Why these beginning balances are so important with enterprise funds, we start the year off. If we start the year off at zero, the very first weekend, if we start out below our operating expenditures for the first three months, we 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 are not covering if there's anything catastrophic or maintenance. We don't have reserves in place for payroll or any other, you know, testing of well water that comes up. So that's why it's prudent and best practices to have an operating reserve that'll get you at least through the first three months. So you can build up the 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 current year revenue as it comes in. Outside funding of nearly two hundred thousand dollars would be needed to be obtained to be able to offer the affordability rate. And over the following nine years, so I was looking at a ten year projection. So the first year we'd need two hundred thousand, we need one point nine million more over the next nine years. So just over two million dollars at the affordability rate. It is anticipated that under this scenario, it would not see a positive fund balance for this foreseeable future with this five percent with a five percent increase each year. And and it's difficult using a uniform rate because for all of these utilities, because it doesn't take into effect the age of the system. A little bit of research that I had done was it looks like we that we took over the Russell Wood, the Russell Woods Water and Sewer System back in nineteen seventy five. So, you know, when we're comparing each of these utilities, we have to look at their age, their condition, the length and the accessibility of pipes, their debt service, and if they have any economy of scales. So when we look at Russell Wood, that we're not going to increase the number of people that come into the sewer. They're maxed out at about, I think it's one hundred and fifty six out of one hundred and sixty one lots. So then the the proposed rate that staff had come up with was the one twenty six thirty, which was the six point nine percent increase over last year's rates. By increasing to one twenty six, we would see an increase in revenue of about fifteen thousand dollars. The proposed rate would still not cover the operating and the debt expenditures for two thousand and twenty four. And the reserve the reserve fund would not be established additionally. And then an additional rate of one thirteen was requested to look at Russell Wood. That would be the affordability, I think, plus two dollars. And by reducing, again, reducing this rate from the current rate of I think it's, I apologize, I think it's one.
One eighteen.
Yep, down to Yep, down to the one thirteen. Uh, we would see an additional reduction of revenue of about ten thousand dollars in the first year. And we, again, we wouldn't see um this rate would not again cover the operating and the debt expenditures.
Just to keep going with the um with Russell Wood, since it is a combined water sewer utility. Um, could you present the water sightings, please?
Absolutely. So uh we were asked to come up, uh can you see the Russell Wood?
Not yet.
Let me share that screen. Alright, so then the additional Russell Wood scenarios that we were looking at was. Taking the base rate from forty four thirty two to a flat fifty dollar base rate. With four tiers starting at four hundred CF. Uh, i- i- instead of the seven hundred cubic feet that that was presented in our original scenarios. With this scenario, Russell Wood. Would have. If implemented full year, the revenues would have been a hundred and twenty one thousand. And budgeted and operated expenditures are two hundred and twenty nine thousand, so we've seen over a hundred thousand dollar. Revenue shortfall. And additionally, we would not see a a twenty five percent operating reserve at this rate. Again, sixty two percent of Russell Wood customers are within the base tier. We see that here and so we have a hundred and forty four. Customers at Russell Wood. About sixty two percent would fall. Within that first base rate tier and then the second tier, which would be from four hundred to seven hundred, they would be charged ten dollars. Per one hundred cubic feet. Um, that the majority of them would be. Captured within base and the first tier with about thirteen or fourteen percent being in that outside tier. Nearly a hundred and forty five thousand.
Now, uh, I gotta ask you, cause I'm looking at that. Now, is that per hundred or is that per uh three hundred? Cause that's what you have.
I apologize. It's per one hundred cubic feet.
She has another scenario down here where.
That that's what I thought.
I figured you were figured you were probably looking for that one. That one's that one's a little further down.
Okay, cause but that's what we're saying on this one, but I think.
This one would be so is so if you. Used less than four hundred, you'd pay fifty dollars a month. If you use anything between four hundred and four ninety nine. Paying sixty dollars a month.
That's what I thought it said. That's what I wanna, okay, as long as we're clearing that, cause it would sound like we're still charging per one hundred, but that's further down. Okay, go ahead.
And we just look at the beginning balance of this reserve. Is about eleven thousand. We would bring in uh revenue of about a hundred and twenty one. Um, operating expense expenditures are two hundred and seventy seven thousand. Once I factor in um the forty seven thousand. For an operating reserve, so this fund would need. Uh, to secure about a hundred and forty five thousand dollars and outside. Outside funds to make this. This scenario uh work. Next, we have the the second scenario, which uh. Staff recommended, but we we extended out. To show the four tiers as requested. So again, we we would see an eighty, we would see the base rate increase to eighty six dollars. Which was a ninety four percent increase, but was uh less than the affordability. For the Russell Wood area and then we we saw the tiers go from starting from ten dollars. They would start at fifteen dollars and increase up to thirty dollars per one hundred cubic feet. Again, the same scenario, the same percentage would fall within within those. Tiers. Nearly seventy thousand dollars in twenty twenty four would need to be secured from outside sources. And we would see that because although we would increase revenues. The the expenditures stayed at two hundred and seventy seven thousand, we would still need to fund about seventy thousand dollars. Or find outs- outside sources. So uh most drinking water grant loan programs use the affordability rate of two point five percent of median household income. We used a twenty twenty one median household income census tract. Uh, uh, for the presentation to staff, which brought in the affordability rate at about one ten. Hundred and ten dollars and fifty four cents. We did have an updated affordability. Um, information which brought the affordability. The uh medium income up a little higher, which in twenty twenty three, the affordability rate would be closer to one thirty five. But we also knew that the proposed base rate. This eighty six dollars is about seventy eight percent or eighty percent of the twenty twenty one affordability rate. And again, with the increased tiers, still about eighty six percent of customers would fall under this. The scenario. And then one final request from commissioners was scenario uh number three. Which was having the base rate of fifty five dollars with just one tier at ten dollars. So when we ran this projection out, it would bring in about a hundred and twenty one thousand a year.
I think there's a mistake there. It was one tier with with ten or fifteen dollars, either one per hundred gallons.
Per one hundred cubic feet. Yep.
Okay, I see.
It just it it was ten dollars. It wasn't. We we tried to come up with the simplified. Uh, rate and this is something that Commissioner Nether and I talked about. You know, it's it's difficult to kinda understand this graduated weight and how everything works and so. Um, this would this would just be a ten dollars per hundred cubic feet. Um, anything that you used over the four hundred cubic foot base.
Can you go up one more, just so I look at the other one, just one more second? Right there would be good. So this would bring in a revenue of. How does that, well, it should be.
So it's it's if you compare it to to scenario one. It's a little bit less, but it's not significantly less. And the reason is is because your base rate went from fifty dollars in scenario one to fifty five dollars in scenario three.
So that should be an increase. And then we should be, uh, this is a ten dollars for three hundred. And if it's ten dollars for every hundred. Shouldn't it be generating more? That's what I'm saying. Something's wrong here.
No, so the so look at your, when you look at your um. How many individuals actually qualify sixty two and a half percent are at the base rate? Right, so the remaining. Whatever that is, thirty eight percent. Um, are are up above that, so but that's only thirty eight percent, right? So if you scroll down. So you're looking at a hundred and twenty one there. With this one, you'd be looking at one twenty. So it's a little bit less because you don't have those graduated ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty five. Um, but it's a thousand dollars less.
Okay, so I wanna point out that no, it's. The way this is tiered, look at that tier one is twenty one forty six for the revenue, so you've wrapped everybody into tier one, just like it looks like. That's why those numbers aren't accurate. Take a look at, uh, you have the the base rate of fifty five, that's accurate. But then you go down, you have four hundred and one plus at ten, bringing it up for the whole tier to twenty one hundred. That's everybody. So that's per. That's rounding them all up and that's why the numbers don't.
Fifty four fifty four customers out of a hundred and forty four. Would would it would go above the four hundred?
Yes, but there's no breakdown of the hundred per.
Are you navigating somewhere else, Stefan?
Yeah, I.
Yeah, she's going to the to the.
I'm going to the assumption page. Okay, so you're saying.
So some of these are gonna be five hundred gallons, some are gonna be six and some are gonna be seven. Those add ten dollars more uh per, so on a seven, that's thirty dollars. And that's not calculated into here.
Uh, we are saying that we were charging.
Ten dollars for anybody above and that's why it doesn't, that's why this scenario.
But it's ten dollars per hundred cubic feet, right?
No, cause there's only one tier.
Well, if you look at the very the the top. For tiers, you have twelve forty for tier one. Plus seven oh nine fifty plus three sixty nine twenty plus six twenty three twenty five. For the. One through four tiers, but they graduate from ten dollars down to. Twenty five, you would only be bringing in an additional two thousand nine hundred and forty one dollars.
And then scroll down to the to the last one. Right, and so for this one, the difference is twenty one forty six versus twenty nine hundred. So but that's ten dollars for ten dollars per hundred cubic feet.
So that should be much higher. It's not.
They're per hundred too, Randy. Graduated rate. So once you get over the, once you get over the seven hundred, you go to fifteen.
Okay, well, after we're done, I'll sit with you and I'll show you, cause that. It's not possible. I'll show you, but I but I'm seeing, we'll do it another time. It's just not possible.
Should we move on to the next one?
Yeah, go ahead.
So so this is this is Russell Wood as a utility. Would the commissioners like to discuss the options that you've seen for Russell Wood as a water sewer utility, or do you wanna go through all the rest of them?
Uh, commissioners, I can't see you on my thing, so let me get back to you.
I think maybe my preference might be just run through these.
You the same?
Bring up the next one. Let's go to. I think we've we covered Russell Wood Water and Sewer. Let's go to Beards Cove. So for Beards Cove, we've requested the same kind of tiered um system where the base rate. Would be fifty dollars for the base rate with four tiers ranging from ten dollars. Uh, per one hundred cubic foot uh up to twenty five dollars per one hundred cubic foot. If implemented on this scenario, revenues would be around four hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. Uh, nearly fifty two percent of Beards Cove customers are within this um base rate. Of four four hundred cubic feet or less. Uh, twenty percent are within the second tier of seven hundred cubic feet or less and the remaining seventeen percent would be over the seven hundred. Uh, cubic feet. Under this scenario, Beards Cove proposed rate would cover budgeted operating debt and capital expenditures. With additional reserves uh set aside for future capital expenditures. Best practices, again, we would we would try to set aside twenty five percent of our operating expenditures of the previous year. And we would see about sixty two thousand dollars being held for next year's operating reserve. The remaining fund balance would be available for the future capital and major maintenance expenditures. The beginning balance of this fund was about just shy of a million dollars. With anticipated revenues under this scenario, just under half a million. Operating expenditures uh. Total for Beards Cove in twenty twenty four were about three hundred and fifty five thousand dollars and we would. At the end of the year, if we'd had a full year at this rate, we would see um an ending year balance of about one point one million. Again, we look at affordability and affordability for Beards Cove was at one ten. So at. At this rate, we would see again, like we said above, about. About seventy uh forty five percent. This proposed rate is at about forty five percent of the affordability and about eighty percent of Beards Cove customers. Would be under this affordability rate with this is this scenario. Then the second scenario that we ran through was similar to the one just uh discussed. With Russell Wood, where we would have a fifty five dollar base rate and just one tier of ten dollars per one hundred cubic feet. Under this scenario, we would see a slight reduction. Uh, in revenue of about. About um eleven thousand dollars. Uh, nearly fifty two percent of beer coast customers would be under the. Would be at the base rate and forty eight percent of them would be anticipated. At the fifty five dollar base rate plus the ten dollar. This this proposed rate would cover the budgeted operating debt and capital expenditures. And the the sixty two thousand dollars held for the next year. Do we have any questions on Beards Cove?
Commissioners, I I can't see again. Do you have any questions on uh Beers Cove?
Uh, I don't.
Not at this time.
Next, we will go to Belfair Sewer. Alright, scenario scenario number one, uh new request was to in. Uh, increase from a hundred and ten dollars and eighty cents. To two percent of the household median income, which was the affordability rate, so we would increase. Um, the Belfair Sewer rate from one hundred dollars and eighty cents to one ten fifty four. By increasing the rate to this. Affordability rate. We would see an increase in revenues of about seventy two thousand dollars or nine point seven percent. Additionally, commercial customer sewer rates are based on historical water usage rates from Belfair Water District. Water uses was used to determine the initial commercial customer ERUs. The proposed rate. Is anticipate uh with anticipated connection fees do cover operating costs. However, debt and capital expenditures would still need to find outside uh funding sources. And again, uh, using a uniform rate for sewer funds does not take into account uh the age of the system. The condition, the capital improvement needs, past repairs, debt, service or economies of scale. And just uh to note that we used a twenty twenty one median household income factor. For the affordability rate, if we used. Updated information from twenty twenty three, the affordability would be closer to one thirteen forty seven. For the scenario number two, we were asked to um or. This was the rate that staff proposed was the. Was the one oh seven seventy six. By increasing the rate to. Um, a hundred and seven dollars and seventy six cents. The Belfair Fund would see an increase in annual revenue of about fifty two thousand dollars or six point nine percent. However, it's a decrease of nearly twenty one thousand dollars from the affordability proposed just. Just to your left. Additionally, commercial customers again are based on their consumption. Their water consumption where we get information from B- Belfair Water Su- Belfair Water District. On this rate, the beginning balance is the three point six. We have revenue of. Eight hundred and one thousand. We see with the previous, we saw eight twenty two. So it's about a twenty one thousand dollar difference in revenue. We've got connection fees are the same, interest is the same, but we're about four point. Four point seven six and four point. Seven four. Operating expenses are at three point two nine, so we would have a. A capital reserve balance of about one point four for both scenarios.
Can you lower that down just a little bit so you see the top one more time? Right there. Okay, thank you.
And then one final scenario was requested to see the rate increase from the one hundred dollars and eighty cents. To the new proposed rate of a hundred and thirteen dollars. By increasing the rate to a hundred and thirteen dollars, the um, the Belfair Sewer Fund would see an increase of about ninety one thousand dollars or twelve percent. The proposed rate with anticipated connection fees does not, does cover operating costs, however, debt and capital expenditures would still need outside. Uh, funding, we would see the beginning balance all the same. We would increase the fee revenue. From um uh to about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we would still have a capital reserve about one point four. So we, between these scenarios, you don't see a significant increase or decrease, it goes. You know, one point four seven, one point four five and one point four nine. In capital reserve balance. Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Any questions, commissioners? I see none there, Kevin, you understood? Okay, thank you.
And finally, the last. Rate would be North Bay Case Inlet. All right, so for North Bay Case Inlet, again, we were asked uh to run several additional scenarios. For scenario one, we saw the rate redu- uh reduction to two percent of the twenty twenty one median household income. So the rate would go from one twenty four eighty six down to one ten fifty four. By reducing this rate, North Bay would see a reduction in revenue of nearly thirteen percent or nearly two hundred and fifty uh thousand dollars. The proposed rate does cover the operating and debt expenditures in twenty twenty four, but proposed capital expenditures would be. Uh, would need to be funded through um outside funding. And there would be no twenty twenty four revenues available to fund cap- future capital expenditures. So that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar uh reduction would not go to future capital. It is anticipated that under this scenario, North Bay would see. An ending fund balance slip under one million dollars within three years. As significant capital expenditures begin and within seven years, the shortfall of anticipated future uh. There would be a shortfall. Um, for anticipated future expenditures. Twenty twenty five's beginning balance is anticipated to be less than seventy percent of the twenty twenty four beginning balance under this scenario. So here we saw our beginning balance of two point two million dollars. We have revenue anticipated to come in at one point nine. So total rep, total funds available of four point three, but we have expenditures of three point three. So we would see that beginning balance ending at about one, uh just over a million dollars.
You know what those expenditures are, Ralph, and compared to what we looked at for the other sewers just now?
The other, I, I, excuse me, the. The, what the, what the difference in the expenditures would be?
Yeah, uh, on what they actually are, what it is that we're doing and uh how it's covered on the other.
Other, other scenarios, let me pull that up. My apologies.
Okay. You're doing awesome.
I am going to North Bay. Okay, bring that over, so for North Bay, they have a CIP, it looks like in. Uh, twenty twenty six, they have replace and upgrade final effluent filters. So they have about one point two million dollars in capital expenditures coming out in twenty twenty six. So that's a large chunk of funds.
Commissioner Nellin, were you asking about what is the operating cost and how does it compare to our other sewer utilities?
Yes. Uh, well, not the operating cost, uh you, it's operating cost, but you had a number there of three point something million dollars we were looking at. Uh, on uh, on North Bay for uh, uh, right here for uh. Uh, the subtotal for expenditure, so it covers everything together.
Yeah, it's gonna cop, cop, yep, it's gonna cover your operating expenses, the operating expenses are your wages, benefits. Supplies, professional services, internal allocations and other expenditures.
And so the, so the, so the operating expenditures with our other utilities. Um, I don't, I don't know if it's a, I don't, I don't think it's a really good comparison cuz they're so different and how they.
Yeah, and, and we can wait until I can get these copies of each of these pages in my hand, I can look at it myself.
Oh, okay.
I just don't have a copy of any of this, I can't scroll back and forth. I see the information I need, but I can't get to it until I have this in my hand.
Yep, so for the operating expenditures, the salaries are an allocation or allocation between all of the sewers and so. Yep, and debt is their debt service for their individual um, their individual fund. Same with expend, the capital expenditures, these are all expenditures that are just with um North Bay. So then. I apologize, had we gotten to the.
Scenario two, you're on.
Yep, scenario number two, maintaining North Bay Case Inlet's current rate of one twenty four eighty six, which was um. Which was the staff recommendation. Um, by maintaining the current rate at one twenty four eighty six, this proposed rate does cover operating and debt expenditures. And the proposed capital expenditures would be partially funded by reserves. Additionally, under this proposal, the um sixty five duplexes within North Bay Case Inlet, so a hundred and thirty. Um. Individual residents would be, would also be increased, so they were getting a discounted rate of. Right at eighty dollars, eighty, eighty one dollars, and they would be increased to the one twenty four eighty six also.
And how many of those are there that we've been increasing that, that?
So I, it's, I think it's about sixty five duplexes, so it'd be a hundred and thirty individual residences.
So that was a, that was a discussion that we had had, um, and I think some of it was based on public comment.
Yep.
So public comment was, uh, you know, as I look at these duplexes and I see the number of people that live uh in each side of the duplex. Uh, I don't think that they, I, I think that they are. Contributing as much sewer as a single family residence would. And so one of the questions to us from the public as well as the commission was. If we got rid of that discounted rate for the duplexes, what would it look like?
So is that eighty dollars per or eighty percent, what are we doing?
It was, it was um. If I, if I recall correctly, it's seventy percent of the um. The regular base rate, so I think they were being charged eighty or eighty one dollars.
Eighty seven forty is the magic number.
Yep.
Thank you, Loretta.
Yep.
Cuz they're seventy percent of a single family residence is what we, our code currently states.
Yep.
If we were to, if we were to get rid of that code and say as a duplex. You know, with, with two or three bedrooms, you're contributing just as much as a single family residence in the area would. Um, therefore you should be charged the same, they would go from eighty seven forty to, in this scenario, one twenty four eighty six.
So that's about a forty dollar increase per household.
Correct. Per, per unit, right, so each duplex is two, yep.
Yep.
Correct, sir.
So under this scenario, rev- uh fee revenues would increase to uh. Two million one hundred and sixty five thousand and the, again, uh most sewer and loan. Uh, loan programs see the affordability index at two percent of median household income. Um, we use the twenty twenty one median household income rate to present to the public, which was one ten fifty four. But um, when we looked at newer updated information, we were able to see that the affordability would be closer to one thirty three forty eight.
Well, and just to, just to touch on that, and, and you've heard Stephanie talk about that a number of times in each one of these scenarios. Uh, when we talked to the public, you know, we presented median this, this affordability rate. Um, based on those twenty twenty one calculations. So, obviously, it's been a period of time, some additional data has came out. Um, we wanted to continue moving forward with the one ten fifty four. Because that's the number that we had talked with the public about, so we didn't wanna go changing that as we, as we went through this discussion.
Correct. But when we see that that, the North Bay Case Inlet. Rate is above that one ten fifty four, we wanted to be able to sh- to share that the affordability rate. A more current affordability rate would be the one thirty three forty eight. And then finally, um, we had a request to look at scenario number three, which was charging a hundred and thirteen dollars per month for all ERUs. And this included those duplexes. At this rate, um, the proposed rate does cover the operating and debt expenditures, but proposed capital expenditures would be partially funded again. And in twenty twenty five, the beginning fund balance is anticipated to be about sixty eight percent of what twenty twenty four's beginning budget would be. And we see that because we have a beginning fund balance of the two point two million and we would, at the end of the year, we would have um. A capital reserve balance of just over. Uh, just under one point one million.
Can you go up one more time for a second, so I could, now that I've seen this, this way I can see the other ones too?
Yep.
We stop right there. So. With a smaller rate, this number one scenario. Uh, are you including in that scenario, changing the uh? The uh duplexes?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So at a hundred and ten, you got an ending fund capital reserve balance of one oh four forty seven, okay, go down please? And at one thirteen. Go up one more time, I'm sorry, man, I wish I had this, that's good. Go further, okay, thank you, I got him.
Okay. It is anticipated that under the scenario number three, we would see an ending balance um slip under a million dollars within, again. The, within three years, and again, we would see um. A shortfall for anticipated future capital expenditures within seven. Twenty twenty five beginning balance would be less than, less than seventy percent of the beginning fund balance of twenty twenty four. And again, just highlighting that, you know, each of these funds. Have their own uniqueness, so they, we take into account. You know, individual factors for the system such as the age, the condition, capital improvement needs, past repairs and economies of scale. You know, I think one of the things that I used as an example is. If we bought a pump, and I'm gonna bring it up, even if it's water. So for, we bought a thirty two thousand dollar pump. And we have a hundred and forty four um. People in Russell Wood that help pay for the pump, they're looking at two hundred and twenty two dollars each per pump. But we look at some place like North Bay or Beards Cove, and there's four hundred and seventy four of them, that same pump. That cost each person within Russell Wood two hundred and twenty five dollars is now costing. Beards Cove seventy dollars per, so that's why we look at individual factors, you know, the pumps all cost the same, but. You know, we, we have to look at the economies of scale, you know, past improvements. For most of, again, two percent affordability rate is what was presented at one ten fifty four. And with updated information, we're looking at one thirty three forty eight. Do we have any questions?
So you, you saw some consistency and kind of um, a couple of different options, basically, you saw the, the rate that, that staff looked at and calculated to. Try and get us to. A, a certain spot with each one of these utilities, you saw a consistent rate of one ten fifty four and one thirteen. So we took the one ten affordability rate, added three dollars and ran that scenario to, to show what would that look like at a hundred and thirteen for each one of the utilities. And that would be, that would, I think that the intent of that was to say, you know, across the board, this is what we charge for sewer.
Commissioners, any comments? Questions?
Um, I don't, I don't know that I, well, I, I guess I have one comment and had maybe one question that covered all of the utilities, um. I guess my comment is, I, I don't necessarily support going backwards um. That, to that extent on North Bay. Um, I think having a conversation about. Holding it at the current rate is a lot more. Uh, responsible, in my opinion, going forward, um, that said. The question I have is, are there recommendations from staff on, on which scenarios? Kind of strike that balance between, you know. Recognizing and understanding where people are financially, but also. Puts us on the appropriate path forward for the health and stability of the utilities.
Yes, so when we um did our original presentation to commissioners, we looked at each of these funds individually. And so for North Bay, we recommended a six point nine percent increase to forty nine dollars and thirty two cents. And implementing the tier system from, of two dollars and fifty cents per one hundred cubic feet. For North Bay, we recommended um the rate of the one twenty four eighty six, and that was holding. Um, holding the current rate state, steady and implementing the increase on the duplexes. We had heard that uh, you know, we had looked into um. That commu- we had some community inquiry on why the duplexes were charged a lesser rate. When these duplexes were three bedroom, two bath homes also, and so I think there was a code. That was, that is no longer in effect, that held that rate low, is that correct, Loretta?
One more time, Stephanie.
Was there, I, I, I thought the discussion was there was a code that, that had duplexes at a lower rate that is no, no longer. Implemented or no longer the case?
Uh, no, it's, it's currently, it is in our current code.
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But we are recommending a change to that code.
Yep. For the Belfair, the Belfair Sewer, we recommended a six point nine percent increase. And the six point nine percent was the uh CPI rate, and so we were looking at getting, you know, some of these were. Recommended at the six point nine and others were recommended at different rates. For Russell Wood Sewer, we still, we, we were recommending a six point nine percent increase. We needed to get, they, they're still lagging behind in that fund. And with Russell Wood Sewer, we were, staff did recommend increasing the rate from forty nine dollars and thirty two cents to eighty six. Dollars, which was a ninety four percent increase, but was also. Um, just off the top of my head, I apologize. Um, the eighty six dollars was still at less than eighty percent of the affordability rate. And the Russell Wood Water and Sewer were the funds that needed the. That needed the um higher increased rates. As, as their fund struggled to maintain a positive balance.
So obviously, a little bit of history, I think, is important here, um. In the sense that uh, we've had a couple of utilities that the commissioners have, have chosen to supplement to ensure that they survive, right? So um, we've utilized both point oh nine funds, uh, which is a sales tax, a rural sales tax. As well as um, uh, real estate excise tax to the second quarter percent. And we do that because um, those funds couldn't, couldn't afford to make their debt payments, right? So that's definitely something we do in Russell Wood. Uh, we do have to supplement Russell Wood more than just what they, they have in debt, so they have about sixty two thousand dollars in debt per year that they have to pay. We can pay that out of, of REIT two. Um, the other contribution to Russell Wood requires. Uh, a general fund contribution, so it's a, it's just a contribution to cover the shortfall in the, in the cost of operations. I think it is, it's, it, it, it pains me as well as I'm sure it would pain the commissioners. To see a rate go from forty four dollars per month to eighty six dollars a month, that's a huge increase. Um, but I would like to figure out a path to how we get there. So when we're looking at it from purely a, a cost perspective and saying, how do we get to a point where we can cover the cost of operations? It, it would, it would require, it would require that jump to, to eighty six dollars. That is, that is steep. And I, I'm, I, I don't know that I could stomach that myself. And I, I'm, I, I don't know that I could stomach that myself, um. Especially this, obviously commissioner decision. Um, but what does that look like as we move forward? And how do we stage that in the future so that those individuals start to? Do that. So you know, I think in the past, we've looked at it and said, hey, we don't want to increase more than five percent per year. Um, but I think in this scenario, we're gonna have to increase more than five percent per year.
Yeah. And an additional thing that we had looked at and staff had, had looked at was recommending. That we look into some kind of senior subsidy for those that qualify for the property tax exemption. If we jumped the rate, for example, at Russell Wood for. You know, to the higher rate, we, we could offer those that qualified for the property tax exemption. Uh, a reduced rate. And so that was, that was something else that we had, we had brought to the commissioners at the final presentation.
Now, one problem with the reduced rate is you have to increase others.
Correct. So that we looked at, for example, Russell Wood, currently there are only eight that. Uh, eight that qualify for that. And so if we saw a significant jump in the. For example, the water rate from the, from the forty four dollars to the eighty six. Right now, we, the outside funding. Of over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is needed to bring these accounts. To shore them up each year. But if we could get that increased. And offer the re- reduction, we would be able to offer a reduced rate for the eight. And still be under affordability, the, under the affordability rate of one ten.
So I can say for myself, you know, I, I wish it was just an easy decision for any of this. I cannot see myself voting for a hundred percent increase. Uh, but whatever we do vote for, I can see setting in some type of mechanism to get us closer to where we need to be in, in the long term. Uh, as for uh, the different sewer systems and stuff. I'm gonna go to North Bay first. You know, I've been around for a long time and. There's always so many things that were promised, that it wasn't promised by us, but they were still promised different things and they have to deal with it. And uh, one of the things that I've never been able to get out of my head is over the years with the commission, not us. I would make it clear, literally looked him in the face and said, what are you talking about? You can afford it. You have the money. That's not a good reason to do things. But that's the way that it was put to them several times, that it's not appropriate. And as you can see, their system has been way off tilt for a long time. If we were to even stay at this rate, I personally don't think that it's fair. And then it's even worse when you say. Stay at this rate, which was unfair in the first place compared to everybody else, and we're gonna increase a hundred and sixty homes by forty dollars. That, just telling you that, I, I have a hard time with that. The commission will make their decisions and everybody else will vote however they're gonna vote. But I'm letting you know, I, I have a hard time stomaching that. Uh, I definitely, at the same time though, I'm the one that is asking for. Looking at larger increases for uh, like the Belfair system, closer to that affordability rate instead of the one ten. Of bringing it up to the one thirteen and attending all those different meetings. Uh, for the most part, when they were being uh, talked about with. To about the one ten, they seem willing to understand that a few more dollars to put some money away was important to them. And not everybody was in favor of it, but uh, I would say a lot of them were okay with it. They understood that that's what it was going to take to get there. But again, even there, eventually we're gonna have to have increases, uh, so much per year to get us where we need to be. But I definitely am not prepared to, I still live by the old adage, take only what you need, not all, everything you want. Uh, that's where I am on these and that's where I'm sure I'll be tomorrow. Commissioner Trask, you have any uh? Ideas or comments?
Oh, quite a few. First, I'd, I'd love to get copies of these so that we could just.
Yes.
Take a look at them and study it for tomorrow so that we're prepared. Um, but being on the Public Works Board. There are certain things that, that our staff. Um, at the Public Works Board looks for when determining whether or not to finance a loan. There are so many. Um, sewer and water systems out there that. Haven't raised their rates, but they're also having to take out a loan. To, for, for maintenance on those, or you know, uh, emergency loans and. Or upgrading facilities and things like that. They are, they are required to, to do a, a survey like this, a study like this. And if you haven't raised your rates, if you haven't taken a look at them in years. Then your score goes down a bit, so. This is, this is definitely never an easy topic, never a fun topic. But um. I, I'm sure that with, and, and also if you could s- send over your um. Your recommendations, that would be, that would be great. I didn't see that they were included on these. But if you could, if you could send that over, your, your na- narration was, was perfect. I'm sure appreciate you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. We all appreciate you.
Yeah, I think if you look through them and I'll, I'll, I printed them out, I'll, I'll go make copies for the commissioners here so you guys can look at them. Um, scenario two is, is kind of the scenario in which. Um, the staff recommendation is Commissioner Trask and, and. One of the things that I think that, that we have to look at and, and concerns me a little bit is. Best practice would be. That you're actually accumulating a reserve. That allows you to handle. Unforeseen things that happen. But in order to create a reserve. It takes time. Uh, and the tough part about that is, as with time. Our equipment gets older, things need, need to get replaced. So it's hard to. I, I think as we're looking back through the history of these utilities and seeing. How far they've kind of fallen behind. It's hard to try and catch up in one year. It's not realistic to say that we're gonna catch up in one year. Um, and, and we one hundred percent understand that. So I think that, that I want you to. To, when you're looking through this stuff, I want you to um. Understand that staff's recommendation is, is purely from an operational best practice perspective. And then you have other options. And. It, it's okay to fall somewhere in between that.
Hey, dude, we've gone way over time, uh, but this was needed, this was necessary. I'm, I'm glad that we did this. Commissioners, do you have any more questions before we move on? I'm seeing all the heads are shaking in this tiny little screen. All right, I thank you uh very much. Uh, do we have anything else for Public Works? Oh, I hear a whisper. Who's whispering?
You can stop sharing if you want, Stephanie.
There we go. Go, go ahead, Mark, what were you saying?
Oh, I was just ready to move forward.
Okay. There you go. Wow, that is got a big picture of Commissioner Shudy, hi Commissioner. Just shifted on her.
Are you ready for the support services?
Yep, do we have anything more for uh, uh, Public Works at all? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Public Works.
Oh, thank you.
Now we'll go ahead and we'll move forward uh to Support Services. Mark, get it.
Alrighty, so Jen's got a bunch of budget stuff and some ARPA stuff, so lots of, lots of numbers being presented to the commissioners today.
Yes, good morning commissioners and great job Stephanie on that, that was impressive. Um, I'm gonna share my screen and show the uh draft budget amendments for twenty twenty four. Um, so, so far, we have um. In the general fund, increases to revenue of seven hundred forty seven thousand four forty three. And um increases to expenditures in the general fund. Seven hundred thousand three hundred and ninety five dollars. Um, in other funds, a hundred and twenty five thousand one eighty three increases to revenue. And increases to um expenditures, seven hundred fifty six thousand eight eighty four. A lot of this includes, um, so we changed the cash to the actual beginning fund balances for all funds. And um, so that creates um, in some funds, um, a revenue increase. In certain areas um where we had to adjust for the ending fund balance not um. Not going into the negative. Um, one of those funds is Russell Wood. Um, they are go- going to need fifty seven thousand one eighty eight to balance, so um. I don't know, Mark, if you have a recommendation on uh where to. Pull that funding from or, I mean, we can't really decrease their expenditures, their budget's so tight.
Jennifer, on uh, cause we're about to talk about some ARPA funds and I'm looking around. And I'm gonna be asking the commission, talk to them, that some of these ones that are over the amount that they just be striking because they didn't fall within the. Compliance to what we're asking for. And there may be other monies. Is there something, way to use uh seventy five thousand uh of the ARPA funds for Russell Wood?
Yes, we can use um seventy five thousand or, or more for Russell Wood, sure.
Yeah, one of the things I'm saying though, for my issue is anything above the, the requirement that we set on that ARPA funds should not come out of this one. That's gonna be my, one of my arguments. So I would think to keep it to a limited number, but it could be done.
Yes, we. For that um. Into, into Russell Wood. Yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and continue.
Okay, um, so that was really the only one from the adjusting the cash that I was um concerned about. I'm go- going to go through all of the action agendas again today that we've done so far this year and make sure I captured everything. Um. We do have the increases to the elected official salary and benefits from the recent um. Uh, draft amendment that's out. Um, so that change is included in, in all of these funds, um. I believe everything else has been presented to you, so it's just, or you know, done through action agenda, um, everything else on here, so. So these are just um. Basic budget cleanup items that have already been dra- uh briefed to you commissioners. So I'll bring this forward again next week. Um, departments have until the end of the day. Today to turn in any budget amendments um in Excel format, please, thank you. So that, anything that I receive by the end of today will be presented next week.
Can you, I'm having an issue with my eyes today, so I apologize. Can you give me another roll up uh, uh, at the end, uh, funds in, funds out, uh, the roll up at the bottom there? Some reason.
Yeah, um. Do you just want a total of all the funds?
Yeah, yeah, just a roll up. What, what money do we have coming in? What money are you requesting go out?
So there is a change in rev- an increase in revenue in all the funds of eight hundred seventy two thousand six hundred twenty six dollars so far. Request and then um, an increase to expenditures of. One million four hundred fifty seven thousand two hundred seventy nine dollars.
So five hundred and fifty thousand uh, uh, coming out of ending fund balance.
Oh, in total, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. That, that's what I was needing, thank you. Just to keep, so I keep track of it.
Now, now, now for general fund by itself, Commissioner, there's actually an increase of forty seven thousand, correct?
Good.
Yes.
So an increase of the general fund, the rest is coming out of special funds?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and again, I mean, this is just a draft, um. Right now, so I mean, I'm sure by next week, there will most likely be a. A decrease in ending fund balance to the general fund would be my, my guess.
Hope I get you. I'm just trying to keep track for today, thank you. What else you got? Uh, Commissioner, do you have any comments or questions on this? Okay, what else you got, Jennifer?
I'll do a new share for the ARPA requests.
Commissioners, obviously, while uh Jen is switching over there, just um, for the record, I'm gonna recuse myself from the conversation uh regarding the ARPA requests. Uh, there is an EDC request in there and so, uh, good luck.
Okay, thank you.
So Commissioner, if you do that, then I will have to recuse myself as well. Um, you, I, what my suggestion would be that you recuse yourself from that. Topic because I would have to recuse myself for, because Turning Point has a, a request in there as well.
That's gonna create a lot of problems uh with that. And the one with Turning Point, I have a different recommendation, I made it to Mark. That we just uh take that one off uh, uh, as inclusion and we'll vote on it as a separate vote at the commission. Level uh, as an action.
Well, and we could do that with the EDC as well.
Yeah, but the EDC has, has a lot to do with a lot of things that are on here and that comes before the EDC. There's more to it than that, in my opinion, Commissioner. It's not just the request and, you know, we're talking a board member versus a director and some other stuff. I don't see an issue with uh the Turning Point one. At all, as long as we just agree to put it on there and then it'll be voted where you can recuse yourself for the vote.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, we could do that for each one. I don't, I don't see that the EDC one. Affects every other project on here or, or request on here.
Okay, I, I think you're wrong, but uh, we'll go with, however you want to do it, but you have a lot of things that are on the EDC's lists that they are, are. That they are pushing for and uh. I, I know, the SEDS list, everything's gonna come into conflict where it doesn't have to.
Well, and that's. Well, I, I think you're wrong on that one, so.
Well, I don't know, I'm, I'll leave it to Commissioner Shudy because I'm not. I don't know what to say. I, I know that I have uh definite worries about it.
So you're telling me that the EDC has um, a tie into, so let me just take one off the. Top here. Um, an Alcam for HR or an HR laptop. Or the Senior Activity Center or the HR Recruitment Material. See, what I'm, what I'm saying is that you're saying that everything on this list. Other than Turning Point is affected or the EDC has a, a.
I'm not saying everything, I'm saying that there's enough. Uh, where there is a, an issue where it's come before the EDC, the EDC has been supportive of or put on the SEDS list or whatever. These are the issues that we're gonna run into sometimes. Uh, but we, we don't have to argue it. I. If uh, you know, the public will later on or somebody else will. So.
Oh, I, I don't see it that way.
Okay.
So I, I, I really don't want this to be more complicated than it needs to be. Um, I let Mark know my intention to not participate in this conversation. Last week, I let Jen know my intention to not. Participate in this conversation uh as well. I've always, I've always operated above board with these things, um, and I don't want to give the perception that. I'm using my position here to influence anything other than what is appropriate for me to influence in this position and so. Um, I know I'm in a unique circumstance, I'm totally fine with that, I accept that, and so. Regardless of, of, you know, the technicalities from an appearance perspective. I'm very much okay with stepping back from this conversation. And letting you all make the decisions that you think best represent the, the use of that money, so. I mean, I think you just take it case by case and then this is, this is one of those instances where I, I just, I felt like that was the most appropriate. Decision.
And I, I, I thank you for that. And I was hoping we were gonna have a big one on this, so keep it simple, but. Uh, I'm comfortable with that and if, you know, you're willing to step aside, I think that's what we should do and then just move forward.
All right, let's move forward.
Okay, so uh, one of the things that I was thinking, Commissioner, I'm gonna throw it to you and see what you think. Is we had a requirement or request from the public to stay within a certain parameter. Uh, those that are outside this certain parameter. Uh, doesn't fit the requests of the public and is not in direct competition with the public. I would like to see us at least for the beginning part, remove anything that is above the original amount that we said that uh, they could request. And then decide amongst those other ones first. Are you comfortable with that?
Let me look real quick to see which ones.
Cause what it is, we put.
Yeah, that'll probably, that'll, that'll work. I mean, everybody knew that, that there was a seventy five thousand dollar cap.
That's right, that's what I think too. Now, if you want, uh, I don't have a complete list of things. I just have a few that I know that I'm very supportive of first. And I'm open minded for the rest. Are you okay with me just knocking off some of the ones I'm supportive of? You can just check on your list and see if you agree at the end?
Sure.
Okay. I didn't do a lot of them with the county at first, uh, just because I'm not sure what we're doing there, but. Let's go with the Mason County Senior Activity Center, four thousand six hundred twenty eight. Let's go down to the uh Mason County HR Recruitment Material, just because I just think that's, that transcends everything, but uh, we can discuss that. Um. I'll put a question mark on this one. Uh, the Twin Fur Cemetery, uh, I believe that that's a, a good one to do now. Uh, Belfair Water District, last backup, backs up generator thirty three thousand, I'm supportive of that one. Um. Now, this one here, I, if we do this one, I'd like it taken off just so we can have a separate vote, so Commissioner Shudy can vote on it. I'm definitely a hundred percent supportive of the one for Turning Point. I'm definitely a hundred percent supportive of the one for Turning Point. Uh so much so that I just, you know, like to that, move forward no matter what happens there. Uh and I'd like to ask if, you know, you have a. An issue with that, let us know, but uh switch down to, I have a question. On Community Lifeline that I think we should talk about, so I'm not including that one totally yet. I am definitely in favor of a recommendation from, request from the Economic Development Council, Mason County. What they're trying to put together is wonderful for the county. Um I would like to include the South Mason Fire and Rescue Fire District Four's uh request for those tanks. I would like to uh move forward with the the first Habitat for Humanity. They have another one down here that exceeds the amount. That I, in my opinion, should be striked, stricken, but the one for seventy-five thousand, I'm in favor of. And then I have.
Commissioner, do you mind if I interrupt really quick? So the Habitat for Humanity, they had turned in the two hundred thousand before there was any um limit on the. So that's why it's listed twice. I believe it's for the same project even. And um the one for Hood Canal Communications as well. I mean, they turned that in at the end of. Uh twenty-two.
No, and I'm with you and I understand that. For now, we, I figured we just agreed that we're gonna come back and have discussions afterwards, but. Uh right now for staying within the parameters that we asked to look at for here, that's where I'm at. I've got a couple of them that I'm. I am uh considering, but I don't know that I I'm. Supportive yet, so I need to look at it more. And that is the housing first. That is um. The Lake Arrowhead Main Line. That is. Let's see. Mason County HR First Aid and CPR Materials. I found that to be such an odd one. And then another one that's not on the list that we talked about, which was uh seventy-five thousand for Russell Wood. Now, I don't know, uh I can do the math myself, but if you wanna bring some of that up, uh um Jennifer, just see what you think. Money wise.
Could you say um yes on the CPR materials and the HR First Aid or or no?
Uh that one's still up for question on the the First Aid uh and CPR Materials. I'd like to see what Commissioner Trask thinks about that.
Okay, so currently um and then adding in, I'm just gonna put it under lost revenue for now.
Okay, that, that's a good place for it. So what do we have for total down there with that?
So far, if I got everything that you mentioned, um and if I put in the correct amounts, four hundred and fifty-five thousand. Two forty-one and ninety-four cents.
So what do you think, Commissioner? What do you have on as as a list? And we'll just knock stuff out.
Okay, all right, so um the Senior Activity Center. I had that one. The, let's see, Community Development for thirteen thousand. And I'll have to look at the, I'm just going through the letters and so. Yeah, there was. Uh the Sheriff's Office, the Celebrate uh System Upgrade. And I also wanna note that that'll cost us twenty-three thousand, but I think it's essential.
I I I didn't read what that one was. Can you hit me with that real quick?
Okay, yeah. Let's see, is anyone from the Sheriff's Office on? That would be cool, but let me see.
Cause I love just to okay, but we get, if we do, let's get the right number in.
Right, well, it's an increase of. Let's see, so it's an additional thirteen thousand three hundred, because we already have the the Celebrate.
Oh, okay, it's an additional. That makes, now I understand, okay.
Right, right. So it it sounds to me like this is, that was something that was vital, that was um urgent.
Okay, I'll just be supportive with you there. Now that I know that, I I understand that better. I think I know what it was now. Go ahead.
All right, and then uh the Cemetery District, Twin Furs. Uh Belfer Water District Backup Generators, Turning Point. Um the Sheriff's Office Firearms Acquisition. Uh the EDC. And then um the the SCADA Software Update for the Belfer Water or Belfer Sewer. I think that as we grow, that that's probably essential.
No, I had a question mark on that one myself, so.
Okay.
I'm kinda with you there.
Okay, and um. I also agree on the the Mason Fire and Rescue. Fire District Four. Uh the Habitat for Humanity would would work. Uh the the PewDie. Arrowhead Main Line. And then um as we move down, the. From what I understand, the our facilities, what Kelly put in here is in order of priority.
Okay, which one?
Um the Mason County Facilities, MC Facilities.
Uh Sheriff's Office. Or all of them?
Yeah, he said, he put that, from what I understand, he put them in order of priority.
Okay, yeah.
So, so as we get down there.
I'd say we depict some of those uh, cause I don't wanna just blanket do all of them.
Oh, yeah, I don't either, for sure. Um.
Well, we could also talk about the ones you've already done. If uh. Okay, so uh what about this one here? And I was tentative on it too, the the one that we're not on the same page, because I'm not sure that we're not on the same page. The Shelton Housing First. I wasn't sure where I sat on that. I threw that in just because, what do you think?
I'd rather not at this time.
Okay, let's remove that one. That's actually uh you're desperate too, okay? Uh what else did we, put me down on the SCADA one?
Okay.
Uh with her? She's got uh firearm acquisition. I was going back and forth on that one, because let's, put me down on that one first right now too.
Yeah, I think it would be good if they all had the same type of of uh.
And we've been talking about it too and and so maybe this is the place. Uh the uh uh Community Development Department, come on, I I can't speak, but you know. Yeah, let's do that one with me too.
Really quick before we move on, on the Community Development, I think that this one is estimated a little bit. High, I believe um the actual is going to be um more closer to like twelve thousand two hundred if I remember right, so.
Yeah, but leave the thirteen, that's so close.
I just didn't want to put in too much and then have leftover funds, you know.
Gosh, I appreciate you though. But but let's go ahead and leave it for that. And then the 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 other one also, the Celebrate?
Yeah.
Right there. Uh what about the one uh for the uh lost revenue on on the seventy-five thousand for Russell Wood?
Oh, for Russell Wood? Yes, I like that one. And would that be seventy-five or is that fifty-seven, one eighty-eight? Cause according to the budget, um paperwork, it was fifty-seven, one eighty-eight. What's that?
Um I'm sure that they could use seventy-five. I mean, if we, if we put it in there, they um.
Okay, I'm good with that.
So what, show me the bottom number, please. Drum roll. So there's still, there's still quite a bit to go. Do we need to do this right, the rest of it right now? Do you wanna have some further looks at it? Uh and come back further? What are you thinking, Commissioner? I'm I'm comfortable that we just found, how do we have different numbers? We agreed on everything.
Uh the ten thousand.
Yeah, this one here.
HR Recruitment Materials.
Oh, the HR Recruitment.
Yeah, are you okay with that one or?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so yeah, well, then we should be exactly the same there. So basically, we got five hundred thousand. We have how much, eight hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Eight forty-one.
This is the amount here. So what I was going to do is put in an average um over here and then um. Or if you agree on the amounts, you know, then of course it would be.
Yeah, I think, I I think we agree on everything you see here. So do you wanna take some more time to look things over, uh Commissioner, or do you wanna knock off a few of these other ones, knowing that we have three hundred? Plus thousands still to go.
You know what, let's knock it off. Well, well, I don't know. How are we doing on time? Do we have time, a time limit?
My clock has gone at the moment. Well, I always have my chemo, but uh.
Eleven forty-six.
I have, we have some time. Uh now, there's also the other thing. Do we wanna go out again and and have, offer anybody else any other options?
Oh, it's not.
Okay, that was so quick, I understood it clear, Commissioner. Okay, so uh Facilities Admin. I don't wanna just knock it off, just all going to us.
I know. So Hood Canal Communications, they have. Uh it's over the seventy-five, but that was because they, that's what was remaining in there.
Yeah.
From their um back. From what people were owed, right? Utilities.
Rear edges and utilities.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I think that that, you know, but that they're still asking for money though, right? Cause we got the rear edges back.
They are. And so the the left door, I think, was the, was the eighty-seven.
Yeah, no, that, yeah, but that's how much they they want to do. I'm not prepared personally uh to do that without knowing exactly what they wanted to do with it and I don't see that it's a, cause it didn't fit.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
So um so these that are over the seventy-five, I mean, are you gonna consider. Giving them seventy-five plus or up to seventy-five or are you wanting to?
I don't know, I don't know that we've gotten there yet. Uh let's look at the small stuff first and then if there's something left or maybe we should have that conversation. Uh can we have a, stop right there. Can we have a few talks about some of the other ones that are local? Uh I'm just gonna ask straight out uh. Cause I'm not, but I'm gonna ask you, cause maybe, maybe we have something we should look at. Uh let's start with Community Lifeline. Do you wanna have a conversation on that? We've had different.
No, I'd rather not.
Okay, I'm I'm with you, okay?
Um what about the wood chipper for parks? Do you wanna address?
Yeah, we talked, we talked about how to do that before and I think that that we said uh. Uh because we couldn't do it out of the oh nine funds as we had normally, or the refunds we've normally done. If you want to, I'm comfortable with moving that over also.
Is it really twenty-five thousand for a wood chipper? Or is that just a an estimated guess?
I don't know, but I know that you can spend a lot of money on the big industrial sized ones.
Yes, it is. I um Bud got a couple estimates. And yes, it was right close to twenty-five.
Okay, I'd be, I'd be willing to to go forward with that one.
As will I then.
Thank you.
Uh what about the, we had brought it up, what about the uh First Aid to CPR uh materials?
Let's see.
I'm sure that Nicole can jump in and talk about it, but this is something that we're required to update. So all of our um, all of our shocker machines, AEDs, sorry. You need to, need to make sure that they work and have updated uh items in there, so those are included in there as well as we're also required to have. Uh and maintain updated first aid kits, which a lot of the first aid kits surrounding the county are are um.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great, a great investment.
I will go on with that, so let's drop that in.
I think it's something that you'd end up paying for anyway, so I would agree with that.
Yep. Okay, Booth, uh I said for, do you have any uh further comments on the? I think, is that Mason County Homeless Task Force? Is that that one study they're looking for?
Yeah, I think that there's other funding that they could go for in that one.
Okay, good enough. Uh. Oh, okay, now, Jennifer, you're killing these balls.
I was trying to add up and make sure that what we have.
She does it again. I'm sorry, I'm beating you with a stick. Okay, can you uh go ahead and raise down, bring it down a little bit? It's, cause I think we've looked at those. Okay, stop right there. Let's take another peek.
So what about the booth, the the solid waste booth upgrades?
You think, you think that's a top priority?
I don't know, Lorena.
Uh bear with me. Um Commissioners, we're, it is budgeted. This is a fairly healthy fund, so um. If you would like to program your money elsewhere, I think that would be okay.
All right, good to know, thank you.
Uh what about the, I don't know who's gonna speak for it, but what about the removal of the bed night? Now, I understand what that is and and where do we have bed night uh at uh?
It's out of the, it's out of the, yeah, it's out at the new building that we purchased out toward, toward the. Yeah.
Yep, yep. And so they they were able to remove half of it um and really make. Uh usable the space around the front of the building for storage and uh that's currently being used quite a bit. There's, there's still some in the back that needs to be done. Kelly did this with his own workforce, um but it still costs us money to to rent the equipment that we need to do it. Um but it would definitely make that space more usable.
How do you feel about that one, Commissioner?
That was actually one that I, that I liked, that and the coroner's office generator.
Let's do both.
I think that's an important one too, good choice.
I thought so too. We do not want rotten bodies.
Are the heat pumps really, are they fine? Are they working? We're just trying to upgrade or is it?
Actually, they broke, I believe. Is Kelly on here? There's some that went down and he had to replace. I think he's already done the one for. Um the Sheriff's Office.
I am here. I'm in the chambers.
Hey Kelly, help us out on this one.
I did the one in the Sheriff's Office already. The other ones are up and running. They're just old and uh something that needs to get updated eventually.
Okay, the one that you replaced at the Sheriff's Office, where do those funds come from?
Um I took them out of REIT.
What about the roofs? I see a few new roofs here. Do we have any that are actually leaking?
We have none that are actually leaking, but we have them that are fifteen, twenty and twenty-five years old that has passed its extended life. But they are not leaking at this point in time.
Okay. Talking about the windows, I have a lot of windows here. Uh any of them that are at uh collapsed stage or?
I might, if you got your own own window at your own office and downstairs building one and they're just all fogged up.
Mine has a natural filter on it, so.
Yeah, is that what we call it? I don't know that I I need to have that uh.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with the window.
Uh Commissioners, I just found an error in my formula. I did, I wasn't including this top line, so I just fixed that to include Russell Wood.
Or a six twenty-eight.
Yeah. So um was there one that I missed? I was trying to find where my error was.
I don't think so. I think, I I, no, I think you got everything. We've just been talking. Like, we haven't found anything new that, we've just been asking about it. Uh the only one I I would have been myself would have been the sheriff, but he already took it out of REIT and that's a good place to take it out of. Commissioner, is that what you saw too?
Yeah, I think so. How, hey Kelly, so the 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 ramps. I know we 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 really need to make sure that those are are.
Their ramps right now are wooden structured ramps. And I would like to put them to concrete ramps, so we never have to deal with it again.
Right, I think that's a, that's a really good idea.
So what do you got? Two, I see two. Do you have more than that?
I have uh a ramp at Juve and two ramps at Building Six.
Well, that's why I think so. Okay, so I'm good with that too. Please uh so do uh both of those.
All right, so that takes us to.
How bad are the roofs? Do we have one that's worse than the others? That's just, we know we're gonna have to do something right away?
Um uh the worst roof out there is the flat on the Sheriff's Office roof. And uh the Juve, or the building for WSU roof is uh twenty-two years old.
Wow.
That one has a pitch.
It is not leak, at this point in time, we have patched what we can and have stopped the leaks.
Well, so let's do a new roof for that one for sure. What do you think, Commissioner?
I'll go with you.
And then the Sheriff's Office?
Uh the Sheriff's Office would be the flat part, uh the build WSU would be the whole roof.
Okay.
And that's the one she just did was the Sheriff's Office one. Do you wanna do both?
Let's do both.
Okay, let's do both. Something's not happening though, that it's not moving up in value.
Uh to the far right it is, so there's ninety-two thousand.
Ninety-two left, yeah. Ninety-two, two seventy-seven.
Oh, I see it over there, okay. All right. Um is there anything you wanna hold off for, Commissioner, to see if we have something special to do it off of in the county? A big project or something?
Yeah, can we save that, that ninety-two, just in case we need it for like Building Ten to, to work towards completing that? What do you think, Mark?
I think that, uh, whatever you have left, um, we could actually utilize it, uh, up in the very top line. Uh, and then it basically kind of protects it within your general fund of the general fund.
I would, I would be comfortable doing that. What about you, Commissioner?
Jen, Jen would be happy to.
Let, let, let's do that.
All right, so we're done then at this point.
Great.
So Jen, let's, uh, at this time, let's go ahead and notify the individuals that, uh, submitted those requests. Uh, so that they could get busy on them.
So now, Jen, I'd like to ask for one special thing, though, uh, when we have this before us as the Commission. Take out the, uh, the one, uh, for, uh. Turning Point as a separate motion on its own.
Okay, we can do that, and then, um. Can we maybe put in some wording? I, I'm a little bit worried about, like, if we've. Put the wording so specific for like, um, you know, community developments as an example, that thirteen thousand, can you maybe make it a little more? Broad, so that, um.
You put it how you want. You're the one that'll save us. You tell us how we want that wording to be.
I like what you like, Jen.
Yeah, I do too.
I'll try and make it a little bit broad so that we can, if, there's money left over on our internal projects, we're not, you know, taking. You know, a hundred and fifty dollars or whatever it is, you know, some really small amount and reallocating it, we, maybe we can just. Um, dump that into lost revenue for, for an expense that isn't covered by some other grant.
I like it.
I'm pretty excited about those tablets that the inspectors can bring out in the field, so I'm glad you funded that.
Oh, me too, I think that that's, that's the way to go. That's, that's the road ahead.
Okay, so are we done with this part?
Yeah, so that's all that I have. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, Mark, what else you got?
Uh, Diane. Yeah, both of inventory. You still here, Diane?
I am, I just can't find my buttons, um. So the oath of inventory, I plan to bring it forward on May twenty-one. It's for the equipment that's been purchased with five thousand dollars or more. The board good with that?
Sounds good.
Yep.
And the next week's agenda for briefing, we're going to schedule an executive session to prepare, it'll be a, um. Prep for a cybersecurity tabletop exercise. We talked about it a few months ago, and we've invited Tim Whitehead and Nicole to sit in on it. It's just to prep the board for if there's a cybersecurity tack at some point.
Cool.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And Nicole.
Uh, good morning, I just was putting forward a request for indemnification for two individuals from a suit that we were served. Um, through US District Court, I'm requesting it to go on tomorrow's action agenda due to the timeliness of it.
So is that only one thing that we're adding to the agenda tomorrow?
It looks like it. Is it absolutely necessary, Nicole?
Yes, it is, um, we only have an, a certain amount of time to get an attorney to file a notice of appearance on their behalf, so I've gotta have that approval from you all first.
Commissioner Shutey, are you comfortable with that as well?
I am, yeah.
Diane, you just, uh, showed your face.
I, I think last week, well, I think last week anticipating that we're going to have to do that, that I went ahead and had Kami put it on tomorrow, so. I think we should be good to go.
Oh, check that out, see?
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Radar. All right, uh, what else do we have?
That's it, um, actually, I do have a, uh, update, uh, Mary, did you wanna?
I just.
She's got her hands on her hips.
Mentioned briefly, if it's okay, if it's okay. I had mentioned briefly before that we're gonna do this effective application workshop, and we're partnering with WorkSource. And so this is the flyer, and we have one on June thirteenth at the WorkSource office here in Shelton, and Commissioner Trask. We were wondering if we could invite you to kick that off with us at eleven AM for our first session.
Oh, that would be cool.
I'll send you a calendar invite, and then. We are going to offer one in North Mason County on June eighteenth, and Commissioner Netherland, we were wondering if you would be available to help us kick that one off at the. Library at eleven AM on June eighteenth.
I believe I, I have that available.
Okay, I'll send you a calendar invite as well. So this is a really great. Um, opportunity that we are getting to partner with WorkSource, they're handling all the signups for us, they'll have the computers, and we'll get to sit down with. Members of the community and help walk them through how to use NeoGov and get their candidate profiles and resumes set up and in the system and set up for. Automatic notifications when a job they're interested in gets pushed out, they'll get a notification and increased candidate interaction in the community, so we're really excited to partner with. Our friends at WorkSource.
So what time do you have us on the eighteenth?
Uh, eleven AM is our first, is our kickoff session.
Okay, cause, cause I have, uh, Mason Transit at one.
Well, well, we, I promise I'll have you in and out in five minutes.
I got you, we're good.
Thank you both, I really appreciate it. So this is, we're excited, so please spread the word, we'll start posting on social media and get this pushed out to the public.
Hey, any, uh, Commissioner discussion? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved a second, then we adjourn, hearing no objection, we are adjourned, see everybody tomorrow.
Goodbye.